How's the babies?
First day of turning down.
Huh?
First day of turning down. I'm at home by myself.
How was it daddy?
Great.
Yeah.
This struggles introduced to the bottle fitting. That's all on me.
And then diaper can wait till the wife gets home.
No, she won't let that happen. The baby will. As soon as it's good, she lets you down.
They have a way of doing that.
Just so everybody is aware, the audio is catching on the screen right now.
But only for who was hot like right now.
I think it could be coming from the camera. It has a nice little minute two to pick up.
So you like gave your piece of diaper thing this?
Yep.
I hereby call this meeting to order of the Marshalltown City Council. It is 5:30 PM in City Hall Council Chambers at 10 West State Street, July 11th, 2022. As a notice to the public, the mayor and the city council welcome comments from the public during the discussion of any agenda items. You are required to step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and limit the time used to present your remarks to three minutes or less in order for others to be given the opportunity to speak. All speakers shall speak clearly and direct their comments to the mayor and city council and not to any counselor specifically. It is at the discretion of the mayor and the council to respond to specific questions and comments or to have staff respond during the meeting. If you are able and willing to join me with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's have roll call.
Hoop?
Here.
Isom?
Here.
Kel?
Here.
Lottie Hoff?
Here.
Schneider?
Here.
Thompson?
Here.
Walker?
Here.
Okay, good, everyone's here except for the mayor who's vacationing in Hawaii in case you're feeling bad for him. Mayor and council and administrator comments. As far as comments from me, I'd like to single out Luisa Ortega. Luisa puts on the Fourth of July every year. And for the two years that Gary and I have been helping and we haven't been helping much, she does a wonderful job. I think she's been doing this now for seven, eight years on her own time. And I tell you what, the amount of details that she goes through and puts on, we're very lucky to have Luisa here in our community. Gary, do you have anything?
Yeah, just thanks, Mike. I just want to follow up that Mike and I last year when we did this, you know, for the big one last year, we didn't know what crowd to expect because of COVID and everything. And we surely didn't expect the crowd to be as big as it was this year. Once again, talked to a couple of food trucks, they sold out of the items they had. I know the Kiwanis, they ran out of batter for the funnel cakes they were selling. They were very happy. I had a brief meeting with the manager and district manager from Hy-Vee, and they want to expand their footprint, offering more food items next year. And I'm sure the other food trucks, if I just went and visited with them, the owners, it would be the same thing. Want to show you a couple of things that were different this year because of the rain. The launchpad had to be moved. So Alicia, can you pull up that first picture? So Councilman Walker took this picture. And you can see the water tower in the background on 18th Avenue and then that thunderhead right above it. But I actually think that this launchpad area worked better because it had a better angle between the buildings for the people that were there on the ground and just having that background instead of looking straight north and, you know, over the fence of the racetrack. But it was a good show and everybody seemed pleased. I heard a lot of comments, a lot of oohs and ahs. And then my favorite part of the show before the fireworks was when the bands played. And it was Bon Jovi and the municipal band played for 45 minutes and then Exit 185. And if you look at this picture, you see this substitute drummer that they had and talking to the police officers that were there. And Captain Jones was there and he was taking pictures because he thought it was pretty funny too. Well, you know, we told the crowd that we had a surprise for them and that we had one of, we went looking for Marshalltown's finest to sit in and drum for one song. And we couldn't find that person, so Officer David Powell sat in and he played one song with them. And I've never seen someone drum with a sidearm, you know. So just saying, I don't know how rough the members of the band were to him, but you know, you can't dispute the facts. But the crowd got a big kick out of that. I thought it was a good PR move. The officers were laughing and taking pictures and had a good time. And everybody appreciated the music, the food trucks, the crowd. It was just a good event considering how hot it was. And Mike's right, Luisa, Mike and I do nothing. We go strong-arm some businesses, that's all we do. Luisa does all this, everything. There were bounce houses there, there were, you name it. I mean, it was just a nice event, just like to follow up last year. So just want to say thanks to everybody involved. And thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Any other comments? One other comment that I do have, we do have Kyle from Lynch, Dallas, who's in. Hello, Kyle. He just waved at us on the TV there, our city attorney. And let's go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. I have had a request to have item number seven removed. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item seven.
A motion to approve, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Okay, do your thing.
Approve the minutes for the June 27th, 2022 meeting and the bill lists an amount of $1,523,167.23. Approve the civil service new hire list for police officer. Approve the civil service new hire list for police lieutenant. Approve the civil service new hire list for police captain. Approve liquor license renewals for Marshall Beer Wine Spirits at 11 North Third Avenue. Midnight Ballroom LLC at 1700 South Center Street, Suite A1. Resolution approving change order one to the 2022 Phase 1 Residential Demolition Contract with Lansing Brothers Construction Co., Inc. and an increase amount of $60,850. Resolution approving a quitclaim deed to establish city ownership of a vacated alley and approving an affidavit of non-severability to join the vacated alley in 308 South 7th Avenue. Resolution approving contract change order number 10 for the Hangar Terminal and Site Improvements Project, number ARO 19001, an increase of $43,910.92. Resolution approving contract change order number two for the Edgewood Extension Project, number STR 19003, a decrease of $26,745.60. Resolution ordering construction of the Marshalltown Facade Rehabilitation Project, number ECO 21002, setting a public hearing on proposed plan specifications for a contract and estimated cost and directing publication of notice to bidders.
Thank you. Okay, moving back to item number seven.
Resolution authorizing an amount not to exceed $50,000 from the 2022 General Obligation Bond Funds for the preliminary design and cost estimate for the splash plan.
Move for approval, Your Honor?
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Comments?
Your Honor, I just wanted to once again reiterate, definitely not against splash pad in Marshalltown. We've been talking about this for a while and I'm for it. I just don't like the idea that we're going to use taxpayers' funds to build this on property the city does not own. It's going to be built on the Y property as planned. So I just wanted to voice my concern for that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Let's have roll call.
Thompson?
No.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop? Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to reports. Do we have any reports? Okay, moving on to motions.
Motion to approve a five-day liquor license for Impala Ballroom at the Central Iowa Fairgrounds Arena for a rodeo and concert on July 23rd.
I'll motion to approve, Your Honor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Anything from the crowd? Let's have a roll call.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Oh.
Isom?
Yes.
Motion to approve a temporary premise transfer of the Central Iowa Fairgrounds beer permit to the Activities Building for the Impala Ballrooms event on July 23rd.
I'd make that motion, Your Honor.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Any questions or comments? Anything from the crowd? Let's have a roll call.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop? Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Okay, good enough. Okay, moving on to resolutions. I need a motion to untable Resolution 2022-165, establishing a compost fee.
So move, Your Honor.
I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
I'd like to make a clarification. The motion was to untable it. It was not on the motion itself. Okay. Okay, moving on to Resolution 2022-165.
Resolution implementing a compost fee and setting forth rules and regulations for charging such fee and use of the compost facility by commercial and industrial users.
For approval, Your Honor?
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. Okay. Would you like to review?
Yes, this is kind of not how we would normally have things listed on the agenda. We do have listed Resolution 2022-165 with two different options. The first one being the option that was tabled until today, and that is the first resolution that you will see in the packet. The second one, which is labeled Option 2, mirrors more of what was presented at the May 27th meeting for discussion. Staff is recommending that we move forward with Option 2 if the council would like to move forward, which would establish a fee of $1.50 per month for all residential units. And I think there is a very important distinguishment to make with residential being basically three or fewer units. So if you are in a multifamily complex of four or more, that is considered commercial under the definition that we are using from Chapter 50 of the Code of Ordinances. And so in talking with Waterworks, this does reduce the original number that they had provided by what we know are the multifamily properties and number of units in those properties, which is 1,950. So in my memo, I redid the math of where we had been back in that March timeframe of discussion. So looking at 7,700 units, which could be single-family home or apartment 1, 2, or 3, is at 150 per month times 12 months, is expected to generate $138,600, which should be enough to compensate for the residential yard waste that is brought through the facility on an annual basis.
Point of clarification.
Go ahead.
I should probably amend my motion for a specific option being that it will be a voted resolution. And therefore, I guess I would amend my motion for Option 2 specifically. I don't know if that needs to be amendment or clarification.
I'm not quite sure what you're saying.
There's two options. A resolution is going to be voted upon, so it needs to be clear out of the two options, which one we're going to be voting on after discussion. I don't know if that needs to be an amendment option or point of clarification being that no direction was given at the original motion.
I think it needs to be... I'm not quite sure how to handle that.
I would say the best way to do it is as a formal amendment because both options have the same resolution number and title to them. So I think that making an amendment to be very clear that it is the second option presented would be the clearest way to have this show up in the minutes in the official record.
So I'd proceed with the amended motion for Option 2 then.
I have a motion for Option 2.
I'd second Gabe's motion.
Any other discussion?
Your Honor, if I may?
Yes, you may.
Okay, I think we need to put a lot of thought into this. The US Census that was just taken shows there are 10,556 housing units in the city or 9,688 households. So that doesn't match what numbers we're getting from the Waterworks. I don't see how, if I live in an apartment building that has three apartments, I'm going to pay this fee either through directly or through the landlord. But if I live in a unit that has four apartments or more, I don't pay it. It's kind of hard to, you know, look at your neighbor and say, you're paying it and I'm not. The other thing is that we never did address the vacant lots. There's a lot of vacant lots that are owned in this town that generate a lot of waste because of the timber on them that are going to the compost facility. But since there's no running water on those lots and we're building through the Waterworks, those people are left not paying at all. So I'm just, and again, you know, I've said on record before, I'm against this fee, this $1.50 a month. You know, the intention that I had and a long time ago was just cover the cost of the gatekeepers, not the operation of the compost facility. So I think the best thing to do is defeat this tonight, go back to the drawing board with more options and then look at some other things and maybe just to set fee, no matter what size of load it is. You know, parallel like what the Aquatic Center does, maybe. There's other options I think we need to look at. Knowing that the median household income in this town is $53,987, this disproportionately penalizes the people realistically on the north side of town that actually has more trees, so lower income. So that's my thoughts on that. Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other comments from the council? Anything from the public?
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. Is this on? So Iowa Code 388 discusses the establishment of a public utility. Public utility has to be created by a vote of the people. It can't be created by a resolution or an ordinance of the council. This has not been created by a vote of the people. So I don't know how you can establish a fee like this, which is a tax for a utility which doesn't exist. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Jessica, that's a pretty good question. Do you have a response?
Yeah, the compost already exists as the utility of the city, so we're not actually creating something new. We're just adding a new revenue into an existing utility.
Thank you.
May I respond?
Yes, you may.
Again, Iowa Code 388 requires a vote of the people to create a utility. We've never had such a vote. Also, if you have a utility, you have to have a board to manage the utility. And we've never had a board managing a compost utility like we have a board managing a Waterworks utility. So therefore, I don't know where Lynch, Dallas or Ms. Kinzer has gotten the idea that we have a compost utility, but Iowa Code is pretty specific. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to respond to that, we have a stormwater utility, we have a wastewater utility, and you guys are the governing board. You guys are also the governing board of our compost utility. It's as simple as that.
Any other comments?
Lyle Heineman, 2804 Arnold Drive. I'm totally against the way you people want to propose to make ends meet at the compost center. I think you're going to have some people very upset about how it's going to be done. I think you need to think about what you're going to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, let's call roll.
Thompson?
No.
Walker?
No.
Hoop?
Oh.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
No.
Schneider?
Yes.
Motion failed.
Point of clarification, it's only the amended motion. Just if anybody wasn't aware of what the discussion was happening, because the resolution is technically still on the table.
Can you say that again, Gabe? I didn't quite hear you.
We were only voting on the amended motion. I don't know if anybody was paying attention, but we weren't voting on the actual resolution itself.
That's correct. We did not call roll on the amended motion.
So do we need to go to another resolution?
So the amendment failed, so I think that you would, and this is where I will lean on Kyle, hopefully to help clarify some Roberts rules, but I think you'd be voting on the original resolution that was tabled from the May 23rd meeting or the June 13th meeting.
Yeah, I would agree. It sounds like the way that this just proceeded, this was on the amendment, amended motion. So to that extent, you would just do another vote on the table manner.
Do I have a motion? Oh, we already have that. Okay, let's go ahead and roll call.
Hoop?
Oh.
Isom?
No.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
No.
Schneider?
No.
Thompson?
No.
Walker?
No.
Okay, that also failed. Moving on to the next resolution.
Resolution allowing open containers on designated public ways for the Marshalltown Central Business District Be Ridiculous Days Event.
I have a motion.
A motion to approve, Your Honor.
A second, Your Honor.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Anything from the crowd? Let's have a roll call.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Oh.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, and on to Resolution 2022-198.
Resolution approving a grant agreement with Jarm Building Co. for exterior wall repairs at 105 West Main Street.
I'd motion to approve, Your Honor.
I have a motion.
Second, Your Honor.
I have a second.
Yes, so this is, I would say, two of three shared wall grants that we have coming for us. One you approved, I believe, at the last meeting. And then the other, the final one is our next item. The one sheet that I will just, whoops. As I said, I only have two hands here, so trying to do a few things at once. Looking at the accounting on this, just to give you an idea of where we are at. And we have some final numbers now. So there is still the possibility of some change orders, but looking at where we started with the $500,000 and what our current expenses are, there's still $79,000 remaining. Assuming we can get to these projects completed, we will then be talking with the state to see if they will amend that loan agreement. If you are amenable to that, to provide some funding that would be available for the buildings that we own that still need some work done to them. So we're looking at this as a possible funding source. But right now for Jarm Building Company, just to be clear, that this is the second grant they have gotten. The first one in 2020 was for the rear of the building when the property, I believe, at 14 North 1st Street came down. And so this will be covering then the front of it and everything is going to be designed to match.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Your Honor, if I may?
Yes, you may.
A question for Jessica. When we get into this, what if foundation work has to be done to support the new shared wall? Like what happened with a previous owner downtown? Is that coming out of the grant or is that coming out of the existing wall owner?
So the actual demolition project for 101 West Main verified that a retaining wall was going to be needed covering the expanse of the basement. So that will be built and will be covered up before any wall repair would start as part of this contract between the owner and the contractor.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. Is that the same for the other one then too we're going to do?
We don't know yet. We'll have to do some uncovering to field verify before anything can be put back in.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Anything from the crowd? Hearing none, let's move on to roll call.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Moving on to Resolution 2022-199.
Resolution approving a grant agreement with Melinda Diane Utermark for exterior wall repairs at 14 West Main Street.
Move for approval, Your Honor?
I have a motion to approve.
A second.
Jessica, do you have any comments on this?
Yes, it's basically the same concept. The numbers are just a little bit different because the size of the wall is a little bit different. But this was included in that spreadsheet that I had pulled up just a little bit earlier. And so as I just sort of said, we believe there could have to be a retaining wall there. However, that will have to be field verified because the structural engineers could not verify it prior to buildings coming down. And I will say that this one, just because it's a very noticeable demolition area and progress, we are not going to leave any giant holes for Ridiculous Days. We will make sure that the site is secure and safe with no fall trip hazards. And so we are going to make sure that things get to a point of at least completion where things can stop there so that Ridiculous Days will be able to go on without any interference from that site.
Thank you. One comment that I have. I know Mrs. Utermark has been an absolute great person to work with. She's had barricades in front of her building, lots of cutoffs from people being able to get into her business. And she has been very, very patient as this whole thing goes on. And I think she really ought to be commended for that. With that...
Your Honor, if I may?
Yes, you may.
Jessica, since you brought that up, no trip hazards, that sidewalk has been destroyed. So when that gets fenced off after the demo is done before the 30th, is the sidewalk still going to be roped off or will the sidewalk be opened with hopefully some caution?
There are supposed to be some sidewalk repairs that will take place prior to July 30th. So that is the plan at this point. Weather could always change things, but everything looks dry. But the idea is to have the... But the idea is to have the sidewalk repaired in the area that's not directly in front of the buildings where demolition would still be happening.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Any other comments? Anything from the public? Let's have a roll call.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to Resolution 2022-200.
Resolution accepting bid and authorizing the award of contract for the Elks Park Grading and ADA Accessibility Project number PRK 21002 in the city of Marshalltown, Iowa, in the amount of $101,982.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
A motion?
Second.
And I have a second. Jeff, do you have comments?
Yes, Jeff Hubbard, Park Director. We opened up bids on Tuesday, July 5. We only had one bidder submit a bid, which was construct. Their bid was $101,982, which is a little bit more than what the engineer estimated at $92,000. So we talked with construct and about things we could maybe do to lower that price, and we have removed the seating of the other project, which we will do. And by us doing all the seating, then we don't need to have those other fees like the stabilized construction entrance, the concrete washout, and SW PPP management. So that saves us $12,000, which gets us in under the budget, so.
Good deal. Be nice to have that perk a little bit upgraded. Any other questions or comments from the council? Anything from the public? Let's have a roll call.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution 2022-2001.
Resolution nominating city administrator Jessica Kinzer for the city board seat on the Iowa Communities Assurance Pool Board of Directors.
I would move for approval. I'd second that.
I have a motion and a second. A brief explanation.
Yes, so our insurance is provided by the Iowa Communities Assurance Pool, and they are governed by a board of directors. And there are three specific city seats that are on that board. And one of the issues that myself and some of my colleagues have had is that there are not, there's, of the three seats, there is only one active city council member on there. The other two are in private consulting now. And so, I think this is something that I want to do. Well, I know this is something I want to do, otherwise I wouldn't have put it on here. But I believe that we deserve to be represented by a city, whether or not it's myself as city administrator for the city of Marshalltown, or someone else who is an active city representative currently. And so, I would appreciate your support in proving this resolution, which then would actually, has to be submitted to ICAP in order to get my name on the ballot.
Your Honor, if I may?
Yes, you may.
Jessica, when will these board meetings be? Are they nights, weekends, during the day? How does it work?
I think they're daytime meetings. Some of them are longer ones if they have some of their reinsurance people from Michigan coming in to do things, or investment boards to do things. So I think they are multi-day meetings at some point, but I don't have a good handle on that right now.
Do they meet monthly then?
I believe it is monthly.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the council?
I'd just like to say that they'll get a great board member with Jessica. She has a lot of really relevant experience, and they're very lucky to be having her, and we're lucky to have her.
I think if anybody knows about insurance after disasters, Jessica does, so. Okay, anything from the public?
Your Honor, you meant that in a good way, right? That Jessica knows about disasters?
She's done a good job with it. I mean, good point. Okay, I'm going to yell at you. No. Let's have a roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Gary. Okay, ordinances.
Ordinance 15045 to amend the code of ordinance city of Marshalltown, Iowa by amending Chapter 76 Traffic Schedules, Schedule 5 Stop Intersections. First reading, Steph is requesting the consideration of the waiver of the second and third readings.
Move for approval, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor.
I have a motion and a second.
Good evening, Heather Thomas, Public Works Director. This is in relation to the intersections of Boone Street and 15th Ave and 16th Ave. Those are the intersections that were rebuilt with valley gutters. With the locations that those valley gutters were placed, I'm recommending relocating the stop signs to the opposite of the controlled intersection legs. So in the diagram I have pulled up right now, the existing stop signs are shown in blue. I'd like to relocate those to the intersections that are shown in red. That will require everybody to stop before they go through the valley, over the bump, and through the other valley. I think that will help the situation. We are also looking at some other construction-related things that need to be corrected as well. While I was out there doing that, I also realized the intersection of Norris Place and 16th Ave, which is one block to the south, does not have any control on it right now. So I'm recommending the placement of two stop signs on that as well. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Your Honor, if I may?
Yes, you may.
Heather, do you think Al could jump further the way it is now in his truck versus my van? Because I think the van can get airborne over that first one.
I will say, it's very abrupt compared to many locations in Marshalltown. So we do ask the public to slow down and stop at those locations to prevent any damage to their vehicles and also the road.
On a serious note, if we continue to do this for rainwater, this is a no-brainer. We've got to flip the stop signs to match up with these valley gutters because there's, you hit that thing at 25 miles an hour. It's abrupt, like she said.
That's very accurate.
Is there going to be any rework then?
Right at this time, I'm not recommending rework on the 15th Ave intersection. And there is some discussions going on behind the scenes on the 16th Ave intersection, but I don't know how that will pan out at this time.
Anything from anybody else? Anything from the public? Let's have a roll call.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Your Honor, I would make a motion to waive the second and third readings on this. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Let's have a roll call.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to discussion. ATV, UTV use in Marshalltown.
I will just note that we have Captain Jones here, who can certainly offer up things from the police department perspective, but this memo and recommendations was put together in consultation with Chief Tupper, Captain Jones, and Heather, in really talking about what we should recommend. There was a law change on July 1 that basically gives cities the ability to determine if ATVs and UTVs are to be allowed on city streets. And so, our strategy and logic of how we address this was looking at what our current ordinances allow related to golf carts, or the only other kind of similar recreational vehicle. And basically, golf carts are allowed just about anywhere in town, though we often don't see them. And so, as we looked at this logically, that was where we came up with the recommendation, was to allow ATVs and UTVs in Marshalltown, but to update a definition with both golf carts and with ATVs, UTVs to reflect the classifications, the federal roadway classifications, to exclude anything that is an arterial or primary highway in Marshalltown, of which we do have some, and you'll, the attached map will show those, which basically leaves them allowed on collector streets and local roads, which tend to have less traffic and slower speed limits. So that's our recommendation. There's a few more that are really ordinance-driven in terms of moving things to Chapter 73 and adjusting language in the memo as well.
Go ahead.
Chris Jones, captain of operations for the police department. I think it's positive for us to be able to compromise on this ordinance. I know the state of Iowa is opening up a lot of the UTV, ATV laws, mainly for rural communities, but I think it does apply here. I think the ordinance that had come in conjoining our golf cart ordinance with UTV, ATV, will help our staff, I guess, more readily find it and make it a little bit more concise, where we can actually understand what the law is. In 27 years on the police department, we've had very few golf cart accidents or golf cart issues. I think the state law is very specific about who can operate a UTV, ATV by being over 18 with standard equipment, mirrors and signals. I think it's a good compromise for us as a community to allow that freedom for people to be able to use those vehicles.
Initially, as far as my comments, initially I was against this. But after I read through this compromise, it actually does make sense because the state requires helmets, seat belts, license, registration, everything that a car would have on the ATVs, UAT. The one thing that I did think might be a good idea is to put a sunset clause in this for December 31st, so that it can be brought back to council to see how it's operating and to renew it, or to see if there needs to be some changes to it. There are an awful lot of ATVs in town. I know there's quite a few of the UTVs, and I don't want to create something permanent without us going back looking at it. That's my opinion of it. I'm interested to hear how the rest of the council feels.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'm not necessarily against it, but I view this as more of a possible increase in nuisances through town. And otherwise, you talk about motor operator vehicles, motor operators, cars, motorcycles, et cetera, and just being on my feet or on my bike through town, there's enough other problems, so increased traffic. And while the law's in place or otherwise, I think this is something easily abused, regardless if we want to admit to it or not. So where I stand today is I am not in favor of allowing additional things on the road other than cars and motorcycles.
Your Honor, if I may?
Yes, you may.
Chris, doing some research on this, I thought snowmobile, I throw snowmobiles into this mix too. I thought they were banned on city streets, but I'm finding out you can, there's certain streets you can run snowmobiles down too.
Yep, you can run snowmobiles in certain areas of town, and mainly that's to get people from their homes, out the most direct route out of the city limits. Because we only have one ATV park, for the most part, and I think a majority of people that will take advantage of this ordinance will be people that run back and forth in their neighborhood, or, you know, back and forth to local residents, not necessarily going in one area. The streets that are labeled on here, where we're talking about Marion Street and 18th Avenue with the four lane, it'd be difficult to be able to get into those areas from any residential part of town, even crossing the street to get to the ATV park. So an operator would still be required to trailer their vehicle out to Nicholson Ford to be able to use the ATV park, unless there's proposals in the future to be able to build more. I know the city of Fort Dodge has done an outstanding job on the outside of their city limits at building an ATV park, that I know that people, even from Marshalltown, go to attend. So there is, allowing it here also gives, in my personal opinion, an opportunity to be able to look at some ways that we can work within the city, to be able to work within the rules, to make it a positive.
And can you address some of Councilman Isom's concerns in mind? I mean, we're a city of 27,000. You know, you go to the smaller towns, and they're everywhere.
Right.
You know, we had an accident, you know, in town, people get killed in car versus car. I mean, do you have concerns about this, about safety?
Well, we have concerns about safety. We have concerns about the difficulty of enforcing some of those UTV vehicles especially, because some of them can go at higher speeds. But the law specifically lists a licensed driver, an insured vehicle, an 18-year-old or older, and we assume that a majority of the people in our community that will utilize those will use them legally. I'm not saying that we won't have our difficulties. I'm saying when we're looking at this ordinance and restricting those areas to pretty much, you know, 20, 25 miles an hour or under in residential areas, I think it's manageable.
Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Your Honor.
Question?
Go ahead.
You mentioned registration. Does that mean they have to have license plates?
Yes.
Fully registered, like a vehicle?
Registered, insured, just like a car. Yes.
Mirrors, blinkers?
Golf carts are not that way.
No, just a flag and a slow-moving vehicle sign, but you can only probably go about 10 or 15 miles an hour with a golf cart.
Chris, did you say Marion Street would be off limits?
According to the map, Marion Street is off limits, and it's a commercial roadway to JBS, and I would have to support that. That would be a difficult, that would be a difficult area to not restrict, right? TV's just because of the amount of truck traffic that comes off of 18th Avenue and then Highway 14 Eastbound. And shag trucks and all kinds of other things that are there.
I think it's going to be a pretty tough.
It's a difficult place to drive in a car.
Right. Right. Other questions or comments?
Just one more, Your Honor. Golf carts have to run sunrise to sunset.
Yes.
ATVs and UTVs under the state law, they can run 24/7, right?
I'd have to go back and look at the state law. I don't know if they can run after dark. I'll have to go back and look.
I know that some of them have lights on them, but that doesn't mean...
Right, but I don't know if the law allows for that on roadways. I'll have to go back and look.
I was going to say, Kyle was the one who actually did some research on this, so I'm not sure if he'd be able to answer that question.
I was trying to think as well. I couldn't remember that answer either. I can certainly look that up as well.
If you're going to be registered and have plates, you have to have lights, turn signals, windshield?
I don't think you have to have a windshield in them. But if you look at the requirements for these, they're no different than a Jeep that people are driving now, a lot of these now. And the ones that we're talking about are anywhere from 15,000 to 30,000 bucks. So, but you have to have the insurance, registration, license, helmets, seat belts.
You can also get a four-wheeler certified. Again, it's not limited to 15,000 to 30,000. I mean, I can go pick up a two-grand four-wheeler and get it, get it to go, right? So again, my problem is this will be more nuisance than we talked about force multipliers with the police department and some other issues and everything else. Let me talk about force multipliers in another manner, give it a year or two.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I mean, I have concerns, and I've heard both sides, people have reached out to me. But saying that, I don't have a problem with the city moving forward and bringing something back, because that will give us more time to do some research, and, you know, it will come back as a resolution or an ordinance.
It would come back as an ordinance.
I'm, I guess, I have, like Councilman Isom, I've got some serious concerns, but, I mean, that doesn't stop the process from moving, in my opinion. Thank you.
Can you remind us what the current ordinance with snow removal in these vehicles are? Is that legal?
Well, snow removal on private property is legal, as long as you're moving it onto, the snow onto your own property.
Okay, but you can't transport these vehicles by their own means to do that, correct?
No, we have not.
Okay.
It would be considered like a snowmobile.
Anything else? Anything from the public? Well, what's your pleasure, gentlemen?
I, I would like there to be a motion to bring back an ordinance related to whether it's the recommendations, all the recommendations that are listed in the, the memo, or just very specific ones. But I would like a, a motion to bring this back as an ordinance.
Like to make that motion?
One more question for Chris. Chris, the police department, you're on board with this. I mean, it's happening. I get the feeling it's happening across Iowa.
Yeah. So... City Administrator Kinser and Chief Tupper and I have all been involved in, in this process and the options that are available.
All right, then I'd make a motion to bring back with, you know, recodifying, getting it all clean, you know, what you asked for in the, in, you know, everything here, the recommendations. I mean, let's, let's bring it back, and then we'll have a spirited debate with the public and with ourselves, and let the process do its job. So I'd make that motion.
Okay. I will go ahead and second that. Any other questions or comments?
I guess as we bring it back, I guess maybe one of the curiosities I have is what's the largest city that has something in place right now with ATVs, UTVs? Are we talking somewhere in 10,000? Are we talking metro area of Des Moines that's got something like this in place? Because those are wildly and vastly different. And so I want to make sure we're understanding of similar-sized communities that are all on board with this as well.
Your Honor, with Councilman Thompson's motion, does that include a discussion about golf carts, which we are currently allowing, but may be open discussion at that time?
Yes, it will.
Okay.
Okay, let's have a roll call.
Schneider?
No.
Thompson?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
No.
Kel?
Yes.
Lottie Hough?
Yes.
Order two, Strategic Plan Update.
Yes, whoops. Yes, Your Honor. So June 30th was the end of the second quarter of the year, and it's just a fantastic time to go through where we are at on the strategic plan and some of those very specific actions. And as I went through those, I'm very happy to say that there's really only two items that I think are ones where we are completely derailed, and they were related to using ARPA funding to jumpstart a low-to-moderate-income housing program ahead of some TIF dollars starting to flow into that, likely in 2024, 2025, as well as looking at using it as a way to inject some home improvements on the North Third Avenue corridor, assuming we're going to do a project in that area here at some point as well. I would say those two, we've, we've fully allocated the ARPA to State Street, so there's, there's not anything that's remaining there. So those definitely need some further direction, and to probably come back as a discussion item in the future, if you would like to have them back as a discussion item. I'll pause there for any comments, questions on that. Okay, with that, I do want to highlight that there were some very big things that did happen in the second quarter. The first being, and I'll, I'll just generally say probably the most important, was adoption of the new zoning ordinance, a new zoning map in April. That has completely changed Michelle's life and has changed development in the city, I think, for the better. I think we're finding that there are more uses of, for properties allowed and some easier things to work with, and that this is working out pretty well. We also completed our raise grant application for $18 million to the federal DOT. The police department started and finished their Citizens Police Academy for 2022. Another one that has been a, a personal thing of mine was that the finance office space remodel finally finished. Just to give you an idea of where that was in terms of timeline, we started talking about that before the tornado, probably in, in May of 2018. So it took a while. We had some things interrupting in between, but it was nice to get that done. The other thing that we, we obtained $150,000 in grants for State Street. We awarded bids for State Street, as well as Edgewood, which were two big projects that were out there. We had our first meeting with the Marshall County Board of Supervisors, and so that was a, a positive one. And then we've also completed the land sale transactions. Well, we completed it with the DOT to us, and then from us to the Fisher Governor Foundation, the YMCA. So those are all very big things that are now done. And we also started a number of things which will be coming forward to you here in this next quarter. One tonight was just, we ordered construction on the downtown revitalization grant. This is going to start about two years of work in our downtown on multiple buildings, but again, a very positive step towards moving forward. We'll be bringing back the urban renewal area for the Highway 14 corridor here in the next few meetings, and we will have the Arts and Culture Master Plan hopefully done and ready to present to you, as well as a stormwater rate study. And then some other big items that will be discussed and further actions coming. If the council does want to act on franchise fee and automated traffic enforcement, which will be on the next agenda, I believe, for discussion. And so a lot is happening behind the scenes to keep a lot of these things going and to continue to stick with our goals of, of growing, improving our image, improving who we are internally, as well as continuing to work with the, the not-for-profit and other entities in the community on improving quality of life. So I'm happy to answer any questions, if there are any questions to answer.
Does anyone have anything?
Your Honor?
Yes.
I just want to say, I've been on the council, what, two and a half years now? And the strategic plan's gotten a lot better with, you know, the, just the way it works, and, and then the memo, the, all the memos that come out to us that identify the, the major categories from, you know, where it ties back to it. I think it's an easier tool. It's, you know, it's a learning process. I think it's an easier tool that actually works for the department heads, and it works better for us, because we can see where they're spending their time and getting things done. So just want to say, to all the department heads and to Jessica, it's, it's a nice tool, and it's working. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anything from the public?
Specifically on the strategic plan. Linda Clark, 306 South Second Avenue. I would like to apologize to entire council for me being late. I was not able to get in, and I was asked, how did I get in? Okay, now to the strategic plan. I have sit in on everyone that you have sat in on as well. And if we want the image of Marshalltown to be better, it needs to be so that we, the public, have to feel welcome when we come here. And I want to feel welcome when I've attended the strategic plans. And when I was asked how I got in, someone went out. That's how I got in. But there are people on the council that do appreciate me, and I thank them for all the help that they have given me. And I have been very involved in nearly over 50 years here. And this is the first time I was never able to not get into a council meeting. But I did get in, and thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to public comment. Members of the public may make comments on any item which was not on the agenda during this time. The speaker shall approach the microphone and state his or her name and address. Comments shall be limited to three minutes unless a longer comment is authorized by the mayor. The speaker shall direct comments to the mayor and the council as a whole. The mayor and councilor shall not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by members of the public, and no action may be taken on items raised in public comments in order to comply with open meetings laws. With that, is there any comments from the public? I waited too long.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll walk a little faster. Linda Clark, 306 South Second Avenue. And since there was so much discussion about fireworks and them being shot off, and I know that there was a lot that was shot off, there were some that got ticketed, some that didn't. And I would like to have there be a report come back to the entire council, so that we would all know how many citations were really issued in the city of Marshalltown for shooting fireworks. Was it done on a selective basis? I'm not asking for it tonight. I'm saying I would like to have it done later. I had World War III over in my area, and I had a person on the telephone that lived out of town. So if they're gonna sell 'em, let 'em shoot 'em. My end of comments.
Thank you, Linda. Anyone else?
Your Honor, I think Captain Jones could make a public comment. Just saying.
As he should.
Captain Jones, Director of Operations for the Police Department. This year, we had 169 calls for service for fireworks. We had 22 arrests. It was down from last year at 199, 22 arrests. So that's, that's the numbers.
Thank you.
Mark Eaton, 1007 South 10th Avenue. So if we're gonna talk about fireworks, I used to live in a state where fireworks are illegal, Utah. They are, they were completely illegal, except for they could be shot off for five days around the Fourth of July and the 24th of July, because that's their Independence Day Pioneer Day. So maybe we should look at some kind of a modified ordinance that would allow the fireworks during that time, and that would make it a lot easier for the police department to enforce outside of that time zone and actually tamp down on the illegal fireworks shooting off for a month before and a month after. Just a suggestion.
Thank you, Mark. Anything else from the public? Meeting adjourned at 6:28 PM. Thank you for all for coming.
Thank you, Kyle.
Boy, I couldn't have screwed that up worse if I could.